Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and call the January 13th Planning Commission meeting to order. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everybody, and welcome. We will go ahead and move on to the introductions. I'll start by introducing our newest Planning Commission member, Tiffany, and I'll let you say a couple of words.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tiffany Mitchell. I have been a community member here in Port Orchard for a couple of years now. I just finished a campaign for state representative back in November and didn't move forward, but happy to be here this evening and to bring some of my thoughts and values to this commission and hopefully will be helpful. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Joe?
Jim Morrison. Joe, now, is it working? Joe Morrison, Planning Commissioner.
Tyler McCloskey, Planning Commission Chair.
Annette Stewart, Planning Commission.
Paul Vaughn, no Planning Commissioner.
Jim Fisk, Principal Planner.
Nick Bond, Community Development Director.
Sean Roger, Associate Planner.
Perfect. Welcome, everybody. We will go on to audience comments. Do we have anybody in Zoom that would like to make a comment? If you would, please raise your hand.
And we should note that Stephanie is online.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I don't want to forget Stephanie online.
Thanks, Nick.
Connor. Sorry.
Welcome, Connor.
Connor Dawkins, Assistant Planner.
Okay, now we'll go ahead. So, nobody on Zoom? And are you guys here for the?
He's our presenter for Critical Areas Code.
Okay, perfect. So, we can go on to. Okay.
We have one attendee that just joined. And I would like to, if you would like to say anything, please raise your hand.
Okay. I will move on to the approval of the minutes from the December 3rd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes?
Make motion to approve the minutes from the December 27th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting?
Second.
Perfect. We have a motion and a second for the minutes to be approved. And we can go on to business item number 5A, a discussion of the critical areas ordinance.
You need to have a vote on the.
Oh, sorry. I promise I've done this before. All right, all in favor of approving the December 3rd minutes? Raise your hand.
Aye.
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 All opposed?
And I'm an aye.
Perfect. So, it sounds like it's unanimous vote. All right, now I'll turn it over to Jim.
Good evening, Jim Fisk, Principal Planner for the City of Port Orchard. I believe I'm coming through. Am I coming through? Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. As part of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update, the implementation, the city proposes amendments to Port Orchard Municipal Code 20.162, also known as our Critical Areas Ordinance or CAO. These amendments are intended to ensure compliance with GMA and to integrate best available science for the protection of critical areas within the City of Port Orchard. We introduced this item to the Planning Commission in December. In your packet this evening, you'll find two versions of 20.162, a redline version with our proposed amendments thus far and a clean version of those amendments. What's in your packet this evening is the same that was provided in December. To provide some context, under GMA, all cities and counties in Washington are required to adopt periodically update development regulations to protect critical areas. These areas are defined in RCW. They include wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas, and geological hazardous areas. We did go over this briefly in December. The proposed amendments do five things, really. It's code reorganization, adjusts wetland buffers, creates wetland mitigation hierarchy. And there's some stream buffer terminology, replacing stream buffer with riparian management zone. And those riparian management zones develop standards that satisfy the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife. So, as we proceed through the CAO update, we will maintain a comment matrix. We've already received a few comments from folks, and we have not provided that comment matrix to you this evening. We're still developing it. But as we go forward, similar to how we handled the comprehensive plan, where there is a comment, staff will provide a disposition, either incorporating it into the draft amendment or not, and provide an explanation as to why it was or was not incorporated. This evening, I'm pleased to introduce Chad Wallen of Gretti Associates, the city's consultant for the CAO update. Chad will provide a high-level presentation of the CAO update, and after his presentation, we'll be able to answer any of your questions. Thanks for your time. Chad?
Good evening. My name is Chad Wallen. I work for Gretti Associates. We're a consulting firm that's providing assistance for the critical area. Raised in the Port Orchard area, out of the mall up. Since I was a kid, I went graduate from South Gator High School. Graduated from the University of Washington with a degree in environmental studies. Several certifications from the U of A as well, in addition to trainings and certifications from Fish and Wildlife and Ecology. Also certified professional weapon services. The intent of this presentation is sort of to echo what Jim just said, just to provide some brief context of why we're doing this and to open the door for you guys to answer any questions. So, the Growth Management Act requires, in addition to the Comprehensive Plan, to establish critical areas regulations. Cities require to update their critical areas regulations on schedule, defined in the Growth Management Act or the RCW. That generally occurs every 10 years, so we're due, and that's why we're doing the process right now. We're adhering to that schedule. Part of the update is relying on best available science, what we call VAS. In short, these documents are generally prepared by state agencies such as ecology and fish and wildlife. Their data and scientists periodically just publish new applications, and we review that information and see how that fits into the big critical areas. Growth Management Act requires us to make changes based on best available science. So, we rely on that to do so. And those, some examples of best available science is new buffer recommendations from them, as well as habitat management recommendations for regular critical areas. What we've done so far is a gap analysis. That was sort of our initial step. We used the Department of Commerce's Critical Areas Checklist and that provided an outline of sort of what needs to be in the critical areas ordinance. And we compared that against the existing version of the city's critical areas ordinance and to find out whether there's any shortcomings or we can improve things to be consistent with that. Some example of some best available science reviews that we've done so far, in combination with agency coordination. We've worked with Fish and Wildlife to review their VAS. They have some new documents and recommendations regarding stream buffers, which they call riparian management zones now. The preferred tool is to use their database, which is based on the shading, the distance of shading of a mature growth tree. And secondary recommendation is using what they determine necessary to buffer water quality, so there's no adverse impacts to streams. This, as of now, the city's adopted the secondary approach or recommendation, which is increasing stream buffers, but not at the minute to what they would like to see or their primary data supports. So, that's another example. We've had some reviews and responded to their comments and adopted what we felt was necessary and noted. Our status right now is we're looking over comments that have recently came in and I'm going to be providing a response matrix.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. So, maybe some of my questions would be potentially best answered offline, because I actually have quite a few of them. You'll have to excuse me, I'm new to the Planning Commission. When I bought all of the information, I was able to get through the clean copy of it, but didn't go through like line by line, like what was already previously there versus the amendments. One thing that I did note, however, that I wanted to ask. So, it talks about. Note here. About how essentially if something, if a critical area is not currently shown like on the maps that Port Orchard is using, that essentially what will happen is we'll have someone go out, either a qualified individual or a member of our staff will go out and make a determination on site of whether or not that meets the definition of a critical area. And maybe this is something that Mr. Fisk can answer for me too, because I wasn't quite sure, like who is that staff member, like in terms of? Because your expertise may be different than someone on our staff, and I just don't know. And so, that's what I want to know. Who is making that determination if a biologist is not available?
Generally, it's an applicant's consult that does that. There's a process that the city has established right now to where they don't have a qualified professional on staff, so they subcontract that out. The associates are currently contracted to provide that assistance if an applicant wishes to utilize the city rather than hiring a consultant.
And so, it would just be the consultant, Nick? Because I remember that being part of our conversation, that we didn't have someone on staff specifically. So, we would be using a consultant. Okay. The other question I had was in regard, I have a couple. I apologize. So, in terms of the, so with habitat management and like determining whether or not an area is essentially their, it have a critical habitat for either animals or fish. I'm not certain I understand the entire process for how you, as the biologist, goes out and determines that. Like, how often are you returning to the area? I assume it's not like you go out once and look at the stream and see if there's any fish there. And if there aren't, you assume that it's not there. How often is that area observed?
So, generally, in assessment, once like those findings are summarized in the critical areas report, that critical areas report's good for five years. If that time lasts, then, and you know, a project becomes active in that sort of, once that five years is up, a consultant can go back out and reevaluate. That goes with wetlands and critical areas in general with streams. The WAC defines what provides fish habitat, just because we don't, and this is an example, just because we don't identify fish, any type of fish species, that is not something. The string meets those specific criteria that's out on the WAC, then it is per definition meets potential fish habitat.
And I guess I wasn't clear. So, I mean, in terms of like, so in, so every five years, you have to go out and reevaluate. So, how, what does a site study look like? Like, are you at that site a couple times to establish?
In general, it's a day, in my experience.
Okay.
So, with wetlands, we collect wetland data that's, unless it's substantial in size, it requires us to be out there more than one day. We're collecting data based on the undercoated engineers. As far as habitats for specific wildlife, we're using what, how it's defined in the code to define that. Either like a verge of mature forest or conditions and characteristics that are defined in primary habitat, which is defined with in Fish and Wildlife documents. So, we use those documents as guidance to make a determination if a certain area meets that criteria, classified as a specific habitat.
Okay, cool. Does anybody else have any other questions? I have a couple more, but I want everybody else to have an opportunity.
Do you guys have any questions?
Not yet.
Okay. Other questions? And this goes back to, again, the fact that I wasn't able to go back and look at like the redline version as opposed to the clean copy and really get that down. But I had some questions about, well, actually, let's go back to something you had said previously. So, I was under the impression that everything in the report was essentially based on best available science. But I thought I heard you say that the city had taken the stance that we weren't going to adopt Department of Fish and Wildlife's riparian. Okay. And we accepted which option?
Second.
Which was?
Rather than having, I'm going to keep calling it the buffer, but riparian management zone, but I even.
Yeah.
Their database and their GIS program has to be site-specific. So, rather than having defined distances in code that's applicable, just in general standardized, things that have to be evaluated per project location.
Okay. And that would make sense.
To keep things simple, we went with their second recommendation, which is just the standard distance.
Okay.
Which is sufficient for their VAS to cover well water qualifications.
Regardless of like what that site-specific thing might be, we would think is okay. Okay, and that makes sense.
And I, I'd like to add to that response. I think that one of the, first of all, Kitsap County is also choosing the same option that we are choosing. I think that the, you know, when we wrote our comprehensive plan, we had to demonstrate, excuse me, that there was sufficient land capacity within the city. And so, this other tool really creates a lot of uncertainty concerning what our actual buffers are and how much land you have to subtract when you're doing your buildable lands analysis. And so, if we were to adopt that tool, we may actually end up with less available land for housing than what our current report indicates based on known buffers. And so, you're really flying blind when you have a site-specific analysis that is required for every development project, because you actually may have significantly less yield out of an acre of land compared to another site. And so, it makes it really hard to analyze your land capacity as you're trying to plan for specific housing targets. And so, that's another big concern that we had with the, with Approach A.
Okay, that makes sense. I had some other questions, and maybe this is something that you can speak to as well, Nick. So, I noticed that there were certain, like, when we start going through like mitigation sequencing, like when a project is identified that, you know, like it could potentially cause a problem in a particular area. There were only, I believe, two sections when geography, like there's some geographical hazard. And then also, when there was something like getting placed over an aquifer, like a gas station over like a critical aquifer. There were only two part, like those two sections had very definitive, like the application will be denied in X scenario. Whereas all of the other sections, it didn't seem like there was ever language of when, like of what that hard line would be. It always felt like there was some sort of mitigation piece, including mitigation banking. And when I looked at the Department of Ecology's mitigation banks that they had, I didn't notice that they actually had one, even in Kitsap County at this point. So, if someone opted to use a mitigation bank, it's not even in the county at this point. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out like, do we have anything in code that would, like in this particular code, that would suck, like essentially be that hard line of, you know, mitigation is never like enough in X circumstance if something is threatened or, you know, like, I guess, I hope that question makes sense.
No, I think it does. So, it's a little more broader with the other critical areas, such as wetlands and streams and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. There is no just hard no that there might be in addressing like critical aquifers. But the intent of mitigation sequencing is your first step points. You need to clearly demonstrate that there's no other feasible design option to achieve your project without impacting. So, it's, you have to demonstrate other potential design alternatives that won't work. However, there might be other code constraints that keep you from not achieving your specific design requirements. And then the other part of mitigation sequencing is minimization. So, in addition to saying you can't, or you, that you can't avoid anything, you have to demonstrate that you're doing what is now possible. That process is consistent with how ecology reviews things and how, what their guidance is with mitigation sequencing as well as their goal engineer. So, it's consistent with other agencies on how to address those situations. As far as the mitigation bank language, like I mentioned, the critical areas updates required to be revised every 10 years. There's a lot that can happen every 10 years. We've updated the code to provide more clarity on when a mitigation bank's appropriate to be used and provide applicants future opportunity to do so.
I want to say that it was like, you know, kind of a last, last resort that you would go to like the mitigation banking thing, so.
Mitigation bank, that language in there. For wetlands, the preferred method, we revise things to be consistent with state and federal agencies as far as hierarchy for priority. Mitigation is the highest priority, mitigation banking is the highest priority. Understand we don't have a mitigation bank in Kitsap County. There are some in that process of being improved. But best available science has shown using mitigation bank is the preferred approach, because if there's less of a risk factor, those banks are built. They're going through monitoring when they hit milestones. They get X amount of credits to make available to an applicant to purchase. So, there's no 10-point loss of, for example, of a wetland area. To where if somebody built a wetland on site, it could be 10 years before it meets that maturity. And in the meantime, we have a new spot that's not functioning and has it less to four. So, there's, using mitigation bank, there's a little one reducing risk. It's consistent with other agencies approaching. So, we updated that, so we're consistent with those agencies in that review process. So, we're not contradicting people's regulations, but again, that's based on the best available science.
Okay. And let's see. I think there was a couple more things I wanted. One of the other things I did want to definitely ask about though was around critical aquifers. And I guess, like, just because I am not an expert, I would have thought that we wouldn't want like a gas station on top of an aquifer. And that's listed in the table as one of the types of things that like, it's not a hard no unless it goes through its big process of like, everybody is notified and everyone says, yes, this is okay, or no, it's not, and then it could possibly be a hard no. In most circumstances, like when they do present that risk benefit analysis that it talks about that needs to be in that report, we're not putting anything, like, I guess I just want to make sure that in most circumstances, it would be a no. Like, I don't know. Okay. I apologize. I guess I just don't know the true danger of like putting a gas station on top of an aquifer if something happens, so.
Yeah, I think the important thing is that, you know, there's a category one and a category two critical aquifer protection area. It's not a hard no, but you have to have a hydrogeologic report, I believe, is the technical report that's required. And so, you're having a lot of analysis going into whether it is feasible, and the report may just come back and recommend, no, this is either too close to a wellhead or there are design challenges that make this an inappropriate site, or it may identify ways to mitigate possible impacts. But yeah, that's, and I wanted to, also just speaking to your previous comment about a hard no for aquifer recharge compared to critical areas being more flexible in terms of mitigation. You have to remember that the critical areas code lives in a world where we, you know, we have to be cognizant of regulatory takings and taking of economically viable use of property. And so, the critical aquifer recharge area, it has categories. It's not saying that all uses are prohibited, but it may ban some uses when there is a legitimate reason to do so. So, there's no, there's no loss of land. In the, in the case of wetlands, though, you may have a site that is 100% encumbered. And so, this is providing an avenue for you to possibly develop that property. And I think the code is also designed in a way that, if you have a category four, like a pretty low-value wetland, the mitigation cost is relatively low compared to the cost of having to work around that feature. But when you get into higher categories of wetland, the mitigation cost goes up and the call to preserve, to use the buffer and to avoid the impact is, it's just much more cost-effective to avoid the impact compared to trying to mitigate the impact to a more valuable feature. But all of this, you know, protecting property rights is one of the goals of the Growth Management Act, and it's sort of designed with that in mind.
Think I'm okay for right now. But if I do have any other questions after the fact, I may come back to you. So, thank you.
Yeah, I have a general question moreover. So, you'd mentioned the analyses that are done in certain areas are done more or less every five years and generally based on the size of the area. That can vary mostly to a day, but can go longer if that. I'm wondering, because I may have missed it, but I don't see a ton of specific, at least in the critical areas, part of the comp plan, specific mentions of climate change and basically the situation being changing in a certain critical area. Let's say, you know, if we see a stretch of, you know, two to three years of not a lot of rainfall or too much rainfall, we lead to more erosion, lead to wider rivers or smaller rivers, just things generally changing to where maybe if something was approved, because it just barely met the requirements at one point, maybe, you know, two years down the road, after we have, you know, crazy weather this way, this that way or the other. Are there any sort of mitigations in place where we can sort of get ahead of that? I guess is my question.
Well, I can tackle that one at least partly. So, there are two other sections of code that work kind of parallel to our critical areas code. One is the shoreline master program, which we updated in 2021. And so, that's a separate act of the voters of Washington passed it, I think, in the 1970s. And it requires us to plan for our shorelines. And as part of the current WAC on the Shoreline Management Act, we have to plan for sea level rise and climate change as part of our shoreline management. But that only applies to the coastal areas. And then Blackjack Creek is our only river that has a high enough flow to be considered a shoreline of the state. We separately have Frequently Flooded Areas Code, so that that covers development in areas that are within mapped flood plains. And so, they're going through processes right now to update our flood zone maps. I'm not really sure how, other than these, other than flooding in coastal areas, I think it's much more difficult to sort of build climate science into a critical areas code. We do have a mandate to have a climate element in our comprehensive plan. We opted to create kind of the foundation of a climate element, but the guidance from the state has not been released yet on what's going to be required by the city in 2029. So, we'll be working on a climate element of the comprehensive plan, which may then flow down into other areas of code. But until we see that guidance, it's not totally clear how that's, what shape that's going to take. So, I'd say it's in the works. It just, the guidance was not available in time for this update.
Generally, in terms of like, I guess, in fact, a question of analysis. Generally, in terms of like, I guess in fact, a question of analysis, if those sort of were on the brink of, like, if you, if you'd surveyed a critical area and said, well, this would be subject to change based on, you know, example, I keep on using rainfall as an example, but higher rainfall or lower rainfall. Would that almost always be in the report generally of saying that, well, the situation is the way it is now, but it could change based on, you know, freak weather patterns?
Yeah, so use like a weapon assessment, for example, if a consultant goes out on site, one of the questions at the top of the data sheet is, are normal climate conditions present? So they do take into considerations, you know, like a pineapple express, the day before they came out, there might not, they might change and reschedule their site to get, because the goal is to evaluate conditions under normal climate. And having a report good for only five years allows an opportunity for a consultant to go back on, on site to see if, you know, what has changed over time. If we've been in a period of drought or if that's just normal climate change. Climate conditions have been changing to where we're not as wet as normal. So things might be changing in size, you know, either larger or smaller. But there's specific criteria, again, for, for what the delineations that a consultant has to.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? And there's no action on this. Just continue to provide comments to the city, right?
Yeah. And I think we're going to have one more opportunity for discussion on this matter at the February meeting. And then we'll likely schedule a hearing at the March Planning Commission meeting to take public testimony. So we'll be sending out a notice in the near future asking for written comment and, and kind of setting a deadline for that comment. And then you'll see the matrix in February. So that'll give you a chance to discuss the comments that we've received. Commissioner Wright wrote in one of the letters. So we have quite a few comments from Commissioner Wright. And we also just received another comment letter within the last two or three hours that had probably 15 or 20 substantive comments that we will address. And so if any of those spur discussion, we can have that discussion at your next meeting. And then, and then hopefully we'll be ready for a hearing in March. Our, our goal at this point, and maybe this is a little selfish on the part of the city, but we have a number of public projects that are in the design phase right now. And so this doesn't have to be adopted until the end of the year. But if the ordinance is ready to adopt, we're going to, we're going to ask the planning commission to recommend adoption with an effective date of January 1st next year, which gives us time to get all of our projects permitted that we're currently working on without having to go back and redo critical areas reports. And so that's, that's our preference, but the planning commission is free to make a recommendation for an earlier timeline if that's what you desire.
Thanks, Nick. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the next topic, which is a discussion of title, thank you. Title 20 updates, which is Jim.
Tonight we'll discuss an important aspect of implementing the 2024 comprehensive plan, specifically the proposed amendments to Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 20. These amendments are necessary to align with the policies outlined in the comprehensive plan and to comply with several new state mandates focused on housing. And Sean's going to bring up a presentation here. And I apologize in advance if it's not the correct version. I updated it about 10 minutes before I walked over here. So hopefully this is the correct version. The materials in tonight's packet include a staff report summarizes the proposed amendments and a working spreadsheet identifying the sections of Title 20 to be amended. Staff introduced an overview of the Title 20 amendments primarily related to middle housing at the December meeting and touched on the significant work ahead through early 2025. Go to the next slide, please. So the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic update was part of a multi-year process initiated in the fall 2022 to meet the GMA requirements. The plan was unanimously adopted by the city council on December 10th, 2024. It integrates new GMA requirements, vision 2050 goals and updated countywide planning policies. This adoption of the plan triggers the need to update Title 20 to ensure our development regulations are consistent with the plan's goals and policies. Next slide, please. Additionally, recent state legislation has introduced new requirements aimed at addressing the housing crisis. These include mandates related to middle housing, accessory dwelling units and unit lot subdivisions. These changes are intended to promote housing diversity, affordability and sustainable urban growth, aligning with both state objectives and our community's goals. So these are the three bills here, 1337, 1110, and then the unit lot subdivision, which is in the RCW. So accessory dwelling units, ADUs are secondary dwellings, secondary housing units on the same lot as primary residence. HB 1337 strengthens their role in addressing housing affordability by reducing barriers and requiring cities to allow at least two ADUs per lot in urban growth areas. So some of the amendments, we'll, we'll get into those and they're kind of difficult to read here. But I want to first acknowledge that the planning commission has previously done work on ADUs in 2023. And, and we are pretty close to meeting the requirements of 1337, but there's still some additional work to do. So like I said before, two units per lot in urban growth areas. There's some, the size limitation, which we actually meet this, we cannot restrict the size of an ADU less than 1,000 square feet. So there won't be any requirements for street improvements or owner occupancy, which we've already addressed in our previous code update. And we have to permit the sale of ADUs as condominiums as separate units. And then we're going to look at some parking requirements for them. And impact fees are capped at 50% of the principal, principal units, impact fees. And then new CCNRs are prohibited from, from restricting ADU development, but current existing CCNRs will remain unchanged. So we can go to the, the next slide here. So again, very difficult to see this from here, but bulk location design requirements. These are all parts of our code that currently exist. There's some fine tuning that needs to occur. We can't restrict the, the, for instance, the, the location of the front door to the ADU and things of that nature. It's, this one is a fairly easy lift for us. Backyard cottage in 20.32, we need to do some modifications to that, revise the purpose statement and the property ownership, define what the property owner is, which is a 50%, a person with 50% ownership. Next slide, please. So the next, the next topic is middle housing. HB 1110, which was passed last year, middle housing. It includes options such as duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes, cottages. And they bridge the gap between single family homes and larger multifamily apartment complexes. This house bill requires cities to allow middle housing in residential zones to address the statewide housing shortage. Previously, the city council gave us direction, staff to pursue the tier two city requirements. And so these next two slides are going to kind of outline what that, what that looks like. The first, if you go to the next slide, please. The first is our.
Before you go on, Jim, I think it's important to explain for our new planning commissioners that the legislature had three options for the, for compliance with the middle housing bill. And they broke cities into different tiers based on population. And so tier one is the largest cities over 75,000. Tier two was 25,000 to 75,000 and tier three was under 25,000 in population. And so a tier three city had a mandate to allow at least two housing units per lot. And a tier two city had a mandate to allow at least four housing units per lot. And because our city is growing and is going to become a tier city, a tier two city soon, the city council, when we reviewed this, this middle housing memo back in April, advised staff that, that it was their preference to move right into the tier two city so that we're not having to amend our code again in a few years. I just wanted to provide that context because I'm not sure that everyone was here last time we talked about that.
No, you're right. Not, not all of us were here. So this slide, it presents our current residential zoning and our units permitted. So in the table at the, at the top right, you're going to see housing units per lot. So currently the R1 district allows one dwelling unit plus one ADU. And so like I previously stated, we'll have to allow two ADUs per lot. But currently it's, it's one plus one. The R2 district allows two units per lot. And this is generally like a duplex unit, right? It also allows detached housing and that sort of thing. R3, it introduces some more intense residential uses, specifically apartments. So there's, there's really no maximum density on apartments in the R3, R4 or R5 district. We have a form-based code. So that density is really restricted by other code requirements such as off-street parking, landscaping setbacks, height limits. All of those things kind of limit how many units a person can get in, in an apartment. So currently residential density is based on, on a minimum lot size. The table below shows you each zoning district. The first column in each one of these, if you can see this, it says R1 primary street. For lots that are accessed from the primary street, for a detached house, the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. If that same lot in an R1 district was accessed to be in an alley, the minimum lot size would be 5,000 square feet. So you can still put one detached house on that, one ADU on that 5,000 square foot lot. But there's, there's some slight differences on where access is taken. So if we kind of go down this list, our current building types, they really limit how many units can be on a lot. So a detached house, the definition is a singular, single family structure. And I'm paraphrasing this obviously, that's one dwelling unit on its own lot. So that limits it by definition to one unit per lot. A duplex is two dwelling units in this building on its own lot. And so it's, it's only two. Currently our townhouse definition, that is one unit on a B simple lot. It typically requires a short plat or a subdivision, but the common wall of a, a townhome is on a common property line. So what people call a zero lot line. So you end up with one dwelling unit per lot by definition. So except for backyard cottages and apartments, only one structure is permitted on a lot. We can go to the next slide, please. So this is what we're proposing. So detached houses and middle housing density will be based on establishing the number of dwelling units permitted on a lot. So in that table on the right, you'll see R1, R2, R3, R4 and R5 districts. And then the housing units permitted on each lot. So the R1 and R2 would both allow four units per lot. The R3 district would allow six units per lot, with the exception of apartments, because obviously apartments have more than six units. This is going to require us to kind of reword those building type definitions and take those, those unit restrictions per lot out. This would end up being the number of units permitted on a lot. R4 and R5, again, no max. The, the form-based code will really limit how much development can occur. Similar to our current code, we're proposing to have our, our access kind of dictate the minimum lot size. So if you have an alley, an alley, a lot served by an alley in the R1 district, the minimum lot size for a detached house is 3,000 square feet. If it's served by the primary street, it's 5,000 square feet. And looking at this table, and I'm not certain that you can see it, but all of those numbers are, are the same across the districts based on where the access comes from. So it's either 5,000 or 3,000 square feet. In here, this table as well, you'll see a bunch of NAs. And that means that that building type is not permitted. The new building types that we'll need to introduce are triplex, fourplex, fiveplex, sixplex, all the plexes. And then the townhouse, we have to remove that B simple, one unit per lot requirement. But you'll see that in R1 district, triplexes, fourplexes, none of those are allowed. But then at the other end of the spectrum, detached houses are not permitted in the, in the R4 or R5 districts. I think we can go to the next slide. So in your packet, like I said before, we provided our working documents. So this is really a bulleted list of all of those things that we would incorporate into our middle housing amendments to create consistency with HB 1110. Accessory dwelling units, we want to make sure that our residential districts are consistent with what we do in the ADU ordinance. We need to add some references for unit lot subdivisions, which we'll discuss next. Some clarification on multifamily for apartments and M U. Building elements, porches, porches and courtyards, that sort of thing. We need to make sure that those are consistent throughout because this bill for any middle housing type, we have to treat it the same way we would a detached house. Currently, when a, an application comes in for a detached house, we have design standards. We review that for consistency with it. But it's not something that we just make up like, we like this. There's things specifically in the code that we go down a checklist and say, yes or no, this meets code. We have to apply those same standards to the middle housing types. So all of these, these building elements and the design standards, we have to make sure that they're consistent with, with each other within the entire framework of the municipal code. So if we can go to the next slide, Sean. So fourplex, we actually have a fourplex building right now, building type. What's funny is that the fourplex allows three or four units. So one of the code amendments would be, again, creating the triplex, the fourplex, the fiveplex, and really making those distinctly different buildings, but still subject to the same rules. We need to do some, some review to green belt and industrial districts as well as our commercial districts. We need to be looking at our overlay districts, both the McCormick Village overlay and the two recent Bethel subarea overlays that we created through the comp plan. And then we're going to be looking at minimum parking standards as well broadly across the city, but most specifically geared toward middle housing. Go to the next slide, please. Again, residential district updates in 20.40, which is the site and lot dimensions. There's some cleanup work to do in there, specifically adjusting the ground floor elevation. Currently, if a detached house comes in, our code requires that the ground floor, the first floor, be at least two feet above the top of the sidewalk. There's some, some relief from that in certain circumstances. But that's proved to be a little problematic. And so we're going to be looking at that and, and adjusting that so that we can apply it consistently, consistently across all of those middle housing building types. And then we're going to be looking at 20.39 for our uses to make sure that they're consistent with state law and RCW, specifically for permanent supportive housing. So can we go to the next slide, please? So all of that to say, there is a new way to subdivide land. So we talked about six units, four units per lot. What we need to introduce to our, our short plat standards is, is another way to divide property to create additional B simple lots. So that table we talked about, either being four, four units max in the R1 and R2 zones and six in the R3 zone. If somebody had a, a parent's lot, which is going to be a legal lot of record that meets the minimum requirements of the zoning district, that being a 5,000 square foot lot. of the zoning district, that being a five thousand square foot lot. Theoretically, someone could build each one of those building types, a combination of the building types. Let's take, for example, a detached house and a duplex on the same lot, a five thousand square foot lot, and then subdivide that through a unit lot subdivision to create B-simple lots for each one of those residential structures. Now, what is left over would be held in common ownership, and they'd have to have a little HOA or something like that to main sure, maintain, and ensure maintenance in perpetuity. There's a lot here. So this is applicable to all the middle housing types, detached houses, duplexes, all the plexes and townhomes and, and ADUs. This only allows for the horizontal division of land. It does not allow for the vertical. So if you had a stacked duplex, you could create a B-simple lot with two, two units through that unit lot subdivision, but you could not subdivide those units separately from one another.
But you could do a condo.
You could do a condo if somebody pursued that consistent with the RCW. So this, this is probably the, the portion of the code of all of what we've discussed that we're probably furthest along with. And so we're touching several different parts of the code. The preliminary plat section, the applicability for subdivisions, short plat section, and the twenty point one-hundred, the subdivision design standards to make unit lot subdivisions also apply, all these standards would apply to that. So, and I should say this, those unit lots, they do not have to meet the dimensional standard that would be required otherwise by a zoning district. Meaning that lot can be much smaller than five thousand square feet, and you still have the unit on it. You're not necessarily going to meet the setbacks on that unit lot, but the parent lot, which encompasses all of it, they have to maintain the required setback. So if it's a five-foot setback on the side, the first place that, that building on a unit lot could be is five feet from that interior property line. Ten from the rear, ten from the front. But again, we're going to be looking at, at setbacks and that sort of thing as we go through the middle housing. So just keep that in mind because it all kind of touches on one another. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's a lot.
So our, our schedule right now, we're looking to bring the, the revisions to the subdivision chapter and also a revision to the permit processing chapter that references subdivisions forward to you for introduction in February and then a discussion in March. And so we're just kind of prepping you for some of the next work that you'll be reviewing. We're also going to try, I think, to get one of either the parking or the building elements chapters to you at your February meeting. And then in March, we will, we will introduce more chapters for revision while we have a more robust discussion on the chapters that were, that will be introduced on the February fourth meeting. And yeah, I think that the, the good thing is we're not, we're not changing the city's code significantly in terms of what buildings are allowed because we already allow townhomes on eight hundred square foot lots. Now we're going to allow townhomes on a five thousand square foot lots that can be subdivided into unit lots. And so it's the same, but the legislature was very prescriptive in the method that they wanted us to use to allow middle housing, and our method did not match state law. And so we're having to reorganize our code to basically implement the, the new housing law. And there are some things that I think are good recommendations. The unit lot subdivision, I think, provides maybe a little bit more flexibility than what our code did because you can have one townhome on a really small lot and one townhome on a larger lot if it, if it's at the end and has a little bit of a yard, whereas ours was eight hundred square feet per, per townhome regardless of site conditions or topography. And so I, I think this, this does probably make it easier to, to design these projects and maybe more of them will be built, but it's, it's not wildly out of line with what our code already allows today.
So if you have, is it still that if the property owner, if you have either one or two ADUs on your property, does the property owner still have to live there or can it be? And you write out all three of them if you wanted to.
In twenty twenty-three, you will remove the property ownership requirement.
That's what I thought. Okay.
In terms of like, I know that these, this new hypothetical amendment would allow for four in R-two instead of two ADUs. Are we, I noticed that there was a distinction maybe between like attached ADUs, attached ADUs vertical versus attached ADUs on the side, and of course detached ADUs as well. Would that allow for a combination of, of those kind of ADUs? Like if you want a property, you wanted one attached ADU as well as a detached ADU on the same property?
Yeah, it's, it's really a combination of any of the building types in the ADU types.
Cool.
You're okay. Thank you. I just had one other question, just because I, I, again, I apologize. I didn't get to review like the entirety of the legislative statute that is now in place that did all of this, but I did kind of try to scan it for the, because there was a piece around how like an ADU could be sold essentially as a condo. So I'm just trying to figure out how that would work. So if I, for example, own my home and I live there and I want to put an ADU in my backyard, I want to sell that ADU as a condo. Does that work out to where like I own the land, I have to lease the land to that person who has purchased the condo? Like I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out like how does that land ownership split work?
So in a condo, you don't actually own the land. You own the airspace, right? And so all the land is owned in common, and typically you have condos and multiple units in, in one building. And so the overall maintenance falls on all of those space owners. The unit lot subdivision, I think, is kind of where you're going with this. That would actually allow you to divide the land and sell it B-simple.
Okay, that's just what I, I wanted to clarify. I just wanted to make sure we weren't like turning like, it, it just sounds sort of like the way that trailer parks sometimes operate where like, you know, you basically own the whole land and if someone can't continue to like pay the rent on the land, even though they may own the structure, that somehow that could go in a, a negative direction for that person. So, but it sounds like that is not what it is because the land itself would be subdivided.
Correct. Yes, this is-
Okay, thank you.
If the land then was divided, would it be, would it still be a condo or would it be a house?
The land is divided, it's B-simple, just like the detached houses you see down the street. You own the building and the land underneath it.
Yeah, the, the interesting thing here, and I think the, the authors of the bill for ADUs and the authors of the bill for middle housing really did not coordinate very well because when you subdivide an ADU, it becomes a primary building and it ceases to become an ADU. And so it was created through ADU laws, and then it's no longer accessory to a principal building. There's all kinds of inconsistencies in the law between the two statutes that I, I sat on the committee that helped write the model ordinance for implementing this law, and we're all scratching our heads saying, how do we reconcile this? There was also another bill that didn't get approved that, that the middle housing bill references another bill that they expected to be passed, and then it didn't pass. And so there's a reference to lot splitting, splitting in the legislation, and there, and nobody knows what that means because the other piece of that law didn't get adopted. So there's, there's a lot of challenges with interpreting exactly what is supposed to happen in some of these situations, and we're, we're working through it the best we can.
Any questions, Jeff?
No.
Any, any questions online? All right, I think we can go ahead and move on to the pre-approved accessory dwelling units, Nick?
I'm going to share on a screen. Can you turn on screen sharing? So I, I updated the planning commission about this, I believe, in our last meeting, but I just wanted to share some of the information here. First of all, the city, we have created a webpage for this. And so there is a pre-approved ADU website that if you go to the Department of Community Development, the last link on the left-hand side, pre-approved ADUs. Right now, there's just an overview, a very brief overview of a link to the KRCC website where there is a lot more information. And to remind you, the KRCC is, is the regional planning organization for Kitsap County, also of Remerton, Port Orchard, and Big River Giant, and the county are all members along with, with our other agents and partners. And we, we have funded a program to design pre-approved ADUs where-
And I'm realizing my microphone is off. Sorry about that for everybody who's online. The pre-approved ADU program is, we, we have hired an architect to design pre-approved ADUs, and the architect that we hired actually already had four designs on file because they did this same type of project for Thurston County. And so those ones are relatively inexpensive and easy for us to adapt to use in Kitsap County. And so the four, the four images on the, the website here, you can see them. I'll, I'll make them a little bigger. These are, we're hoping to have available by March, early March. And anybody who owns property in, in Kitsap County will be able to go to one of the member jurisdictions, pay a, a fee and basically start building the next day without having to hire an architect or submit plan review. They do have to prepare a site plan to go with their, their application, but the goal is to make it much easier to build accessory dwelling units. We also are under contract with this architect. We're, we're coming up with two new additional designs. And because none of these were carriage house style units where you had a unit above a backyard garage, we wanted to create a carriage house option that could be either a two or a three-car garage. The second floor is the same size, and you can either have a three-bay on the bottom or a two-bay garage. And so that's one of the options. And then there is a, a one thousand square foot option, which is just a little bit larger than the, the options that they provided. And it will be a rectangle so that you can, you can either put the door on the end or the side and, and rotate the building depending on whether you have a, a wide lot or a, a narrow skinny lot. So those ones aren't, those plans probably aren't going to be available until the summer. But we are, we're doing our plan review right now on these first four options, and we hope to make them available soon. In Port Orchard, at least, these will be treated as a basic plan set. And we have a program where, you know, when one of the builders is going to build multiple units of the same floor plan, they can pay one plan review fee and then pay a, a fee each time they pull the permit, but it's a much reduced fee compared to the, the normal cost of doing a custom home. So it'll be the same thing for the, the ADUs. You're just going to pay the, the one-time usage fee for the plan to get it permitted and to cover our inspection costs of going out and, and inspecting the work that, that has been done. But otherwise, as long as you have a relatively easy-to-build site, you don't have a lot of steep slopes or critical areas, it should be a pretty easy thing for your average homeowner to permit if they have the space in their backyard for it. So anyway, if you, if you're interested, you can read more about it on the city website, which will link you to the KRCC website.
Awesome. Thanks, Nick. Will there be an announcement sent out when those are available?
Yes, we will be, we actually have some budget with the architecture firm. They're going to create some kind of public information materials for us. I, I actually, I don't know if I told Jim this yet, but we, we tend to, we try to attend one or two farmers markets a year to get information out to the public. So I think this is a good topic to maybe share materials to the public by attending the Port Orchard Farmers Market. And I'm sure there will be all kinds of other outreach on Facebook and other, other channels that the city has.
All right, sounds good. And we'll move on to the director's report.
So my only, I guess, I don't know if this is an agenda item or if it was supposed to be a director's report, but we, we didn't put anything on the agenda concerning electing a new chair of the planning commission. The planning commission actually doesn't have a specific rule on when, when you're supposed to vote on a chair. You could do it every year if you wanted. You know, the council typically appoints people to committees for a two-year term. And so as it wasn't previously specified, we wanted to leave it up to you if you want to add that as a future agenda item, or if you're just comfortable with the status quo and want to go through another year before you take this up again. And we didn't want to make that decision for you, and we'll turn it over to you to advise staff on whether that should be on the agenda.
I'll just throw it out there. I'm happy to continue leading through the twenty twenty-five. I'm perfectly fine with that.
I'm, I'm happy with keeping you there, so please do.
All right, sounds good. We will make sure that's an agenda item.
Worth checking in with Annette. Are you good in the vice chair role? Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda for January twenty twenty-six, and we'll revisit it again then. I think that's all I had for this evening in terms of director reports.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order, either here or online?
I just think we should say welcome to Tiffany again. Welcome.
Thank you so-
Great to have you. Hi, Stephanie. We, we almost made it, all of us here in person.
I know, like almost.
I, I won't be here until two thousand twenty-six now, so.
All right. Well, again, welcome, Tiffany, and we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting. And we'll see everybody on February fourth.
All right, take care.